I'd like to call a meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Silman. Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Dale. Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Thank you. Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Salute. Pledge. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited to large groups, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Written request. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allotted five minutes to speak. I have three written requests. First one, I'm going to call Scott Gibson.
I believe those are not just under for public comment, those are for the agenda items.
Okay.
There are no written requests.
Thank you. Any commissioners have intent to modify the agenda items from last?
No.
No, sir.
None for me.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from February 26 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I've motioned to approve minutes from February 26, 2025.
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Business items. Five and six will present as one project. Consideration of use permit 2406 for the consideration of new convenience store with fuel sales on the corner of Bridge Street and Shasta Street.
Hi, good evening. So tonight I will be presenting items five and six together as one presentation, but we will be doing the recommendation and voting on it separately. And the reason for this is because this site is known as the Feather River Mills Development, and overall the site plan, it's going to be a joint construction. However, we did have separate applicants, and due to the different parcels, we are processing them individually. So we do have use permit 2406, which is construction of a new 5,200 square foot, 24-hour convenience store with fuel sales and the car wash, and use permit 2407, which is construction of two new buildings with associated drive-throughs. We do have building two at 5,300 square feet and building four at 3,600 square feet. So the project location is on the corner of Bridge Street and Shasta Street. It's currently the vacant site, and to the south we have the Holiday Inn Express, which was the most recent development that had occurred on this site. The zoning, it is zoned Community Commercial District under the Community Commercial District as designated in the general plan, and it is also part of our Central City specific plan. And the uses and why we're here tonight is due to fuel sales as well as drive-through facilities do require an approved use permit by the planning commission. So here, I've just shown kind of what the development will look like as you're heading west down Bridge Street. So we have a proposed Starbucks, which is part of the use permit 2407, and then the proposed Circle K, which is the use permit 2406. Here I have the site plan shown with the 5,200 square foot convenience store, the fuel canopy, there are eight dispensers, so a total of 16 stations, and then the car wash. And as you can see, the car wash is part of the building, and the entire use will be a 24-hour operation, seven days a week. For use permit 2407, we do have three new buildings that are being proposed, however, only two require a use permit. So building two, as shown on the screen, so we do have a Starbucks, which is a confirmed tenant, and we also have a 3,000 square foot current vacant, like a retail area. Proposed building three, again, this is not part of the use permit as it is a use by right, as long as it falls within one of our community, the community commercial designations. On the screen now, I have our building four. So this is a 3,600 square foot quick serve restaurant with the drive-through, and currently there's no tenant. However, I have spoke to the applicant, and he says there are some interest with the vacant buildings. But again, here we do have a quick serve restaurant being proposed. So this picture here is a representation of what is to follow. So where the most recent development that had occurred was this Holiday Inn Express, and in the Central City specific plan, we really are trying to still tie in that downtown feeling. So whether with the brick, the windows, and the roof lines, and we do still come across where Plumist Street, you know, that development has changed so much over the years, so still trying to tie it all together, but really also modernize it as well. So the Holiday Inn, it does have more of the straight roof lines, the cornice, but we try to tie it in with the colors of Plumist Street as well as the brick veneer. The Circle K elevations, as you can see, they are incorporating the same look, same feel with our brick veneer, and with the colors and the roof lines as well. So the Feather River Mills Development will have more of a unified look. And so this is the elevation, so the entry view from Bridge Street, and this is from And so this is just there, the building front edge. And so one of the items that we did go back and forth with the applicant was the canopy. So in the past, we've discussed going through having more of like an arc or, you know, some sort of elevations to the canopy, but when we worked with Circle K, they did bring up a great point where if we had some sort of articulation, it really wouldn't jive with the rest of the development. So we agreed to add a cornice, so still gives you a bit more of that articulation, and they will be also incorporating our, the brick throughout the panel. So you can see it's from bottom to the top, so still trying to make it a very high-end quality product. And so here we do have the trash enclosure, and the only thing that will change on here is one of the conditions of approval, we have requested to add a roof to the LM, to the trash enclosure. However, as you can see, it's still using the same materials, so it'll be more of a unified look. And now we're jumping over to use permit 2407. So again, this is the Starbucks, the buildings, and we're going with the same, the same look, the same feel. So we've got the cornice at the top of the buildings, we've got the same brick veneer, and the clean roof lines, but really overall, being able to tie it into the Central City specific plan as well as the existing Holiday Inn. So this one is going to be for our building two. So this one has the Starbucks as well as the retail space next door. Building three, the elevations, once again, it's not considered part of our use permit tonight, but he has provided us with the elevations. And here we have our building four, so this is going to be a quick serve restaurant with the drive-through. The landscape, so they have provided us with a preliminary landscape plan, and in our conditions of approval, we do state that it does need to apply with the Central City specific plans, and making sure that it is the orchard-style parking in the parking lots. So there may be changes to the landscape plan when they do apply for their building So traffic, a traffic study was prepared for this site, and it was for the combined Feather River Mills site. So that does include the existing hotel as well. So the traffic study concluded that the project traffic will be able to access the site without creating queues to block adjacent travel lanes, so that would be Bridge Street, Shasta Street, as well as A Street, which is right here. The traffic study also recommended changes to the site layout, which have been incorporated into the proposed site plan. So the first one was to eliminate the access from A Street to the convenience store and car wash. And what that one was saying is from coming down Shasta Street or A Street to not be able to turn into the convenience store or to the fuel canopies. So what the applicant has proposed is there is going to be a barrier curb here. A little bit hard to see, however, that's what these double lines are representing. So coming in, they will have to go down A Street and then, you know, come either into the fuel sales or any of the proposed buildings. And so the second recommendation was also to accommodate or change this site plan right here to also, very similar that A Street how to block off the left turn, and they also wanted that the traffic study did recommend to block it off to the proposed building two. We do have a couple of conditions of approval stated in our staff report. So the first one is that, similar to what we've been seeing in all of our use permits that come through for new drive-throughs, is that there's to be no stacking of vehicles entering the facility or waiting on the public right-of-way. So in this case, it would be Bridge Street and Shasta Street. And so Public Works has reviewed the project and determined that the traffic study recommendations, there will not be a significant impact to the traffic to the area and the projects consisted with the general plan circulation elements. So even with this new, with the new development, it still falls within our general plan. And my second condition of approval that I did not include on my slide is that the applicant is required to comply with the traffic study. So we have our use permit findings. I'm sure we are all used to seeing these now, and so they are in the staff report under the resolution, and in order to approve it, we need to make sure that all of the following findings can be made. And an environmental determination was also considered for this project, and after doing some analysis, we did determine that it is categorically exempt from review under Guideline Section 15332 in filled development, and all of the findings for that exemption were made below. So essentially, that it is within the general plan policies, and that it occurs within city limits on a site that is no more than five acres, and that there is no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species, and then won't result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, water quality, and all utilities and public services will be available. So as I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, we will be doing the recommendations individually for these. So Vice Chairperson Brookman, we are, this is my recommendation for use permit 2406 as shown on the screen, and we can open it up for public comments, we'll make the vote, and then we'll vote on to 2407, and we'll open it up for the public hearing and make a vote. I would also just like to note, we do have Mr. Mehmet Noyan online, and he is our, the applicant and the owner of Feather River Mills Development, so that whole site. And we also have Peter here, and we have Scott as well as Kurt, and they are all part of the representatives for the applications tonight. I'm going to hand it over to you, Mehmet. You are muted if you would like to say a few words. You're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Members of the Planning Commission, Vice Chairman Brookman, my name is Mehmet Noyan, and together with my partner Kurt Hilbers, we're pleased to bring this project before you, known as Feather River Mills. As you all know, this has been a very long time in the making, but we look forward to constructing the next phase of the project. Our existing tenant is Holiday Inn Express, and we believe the new tenants along with future tenants will make this an outstanding mixed-use development. I want to thank your excellent staff for helping us with suggestions on how to improve our plan, our circulation, and elevations to better integrate with your downtown vision. I'd like to introduce the members of our team. My partner in this project is Kurt Hilbers, who will be constructing the site and the other buildings. Circle K will have their own contractor. Sandra Agrows is a real estate manager, and will introduce the members of her team and is available for questions. And I'd also like to introduce a longtime friend and great architect, Scott Gibson. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer now or at the end of the hearing. If not, I'd like to introduce Sandra Agrows to tell you a little bit about Circle K and introduce her consultants. Sandra?
Yeah. Sorry, Sandra, I forgot to introduce you too. Sandra's here.
I'm here. Good evening. My name is Sandra Agrows, I'm the development manager for this area, with on behalf of Circle K. Just want to thank you so much for the great presentation, and I'm here just to answer any questions. Thank you.
Members of the Commission, Peter Tobin with Seven, we're basically Circle K's project manager, third-party manager. We work parallel and very close with Circle K. We also really appreciate everything that staff has done. Our original canopy color was actually red, the Circle K red, so we changed it to a brown, and we thought it was a great idea, and a lot of flexibility on both sides. That was really a good thing. We agree with the conditions of approval for the Circle K portion, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Scott Gibson.
I'm Scott Gibson, and the architect on the project, the overall site architect, but not actually the Circle K architect. But happy to be with you guys again. I, first time I came here was 1990 for the Feather River Downs project, and the most recently, Carrick Square project, so I've been here a few times, but over about 40 years, so aging myself. But we've got a great project here. We think the quality is super high. A few things I wanted to point out is that we do have quite a few site amenities, and the stacking distances to each of the two drive-throughs is very deep, they're around 300, 300 to 360 feet deep before, from the road to the entrances of the drive-through. So I think from a, what you see mostly in most centers, you, very, very difficult to find that kind of depths, and we have great depth, so I don't think any, we're going to have any stacking distances. You have to have almost 35, 40 cars outside the drive-throughs to be able to do that. The buildings are very nice buildings. They do, they do look a lot like the, the colors and materials of the hotel, except we do not have the red. We have more of the tans and the earth-ton colors and stuff like that. We do have quite a bit of green screens added to the buildings also to soften them up, and also, we have an outdoor seating area for the Starbucks that has a raised knee-high planter, and then we have some screen walls and stuff in there also, and more green screens along that area to kind of enhance the area of the, of the outdoor sales area. It's a great project. Happy to answer any questions, or if, if there's any, any questions we'd like to ask or available to help do that. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. No?
No questions.
Okay.
Somebody pushed my button, didn't you?
All right. Like to open it for public comment? All right, closed public comment? All right, looking for a recommendation for agenda item five?
I have a question for staff. Given the change in structure and makeup of the county's role on this commission, are my, am I here in an advisory perspective?
Awesome.
Oh, that was kind of the next question related to the quorum, so thank you, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to adopt a resolution to determine the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Guidelines Section 15332 in filled development and approved use permit 24-06, subject to the conditions of approval for the construction of a new 5,300 square foot convenience store with fuel sales at the corner of Bridge Street and Shasta Street, APN 052-324-025 and 026.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next. Like to open up public comment on agenda item six. Anyone from the public like to comment? Like to close public comment? Looking for a motion on agenda item six?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, but before I do, and I maybe should have done this before, but going back to address your comment about aging yourself, when I moved here in 1972, I lived over on Moore Avenue in Percy, and that was a great playground for us kids before safety and keeping kids safe was a big, big thing in the old tower. We used to climb up there and then jump on the broken stairs to get further up, and so sometimes I have to thank God that I lived this long to see this project. I like to see the uniformity, great job to staff, and to the developer and the architect in bringing those together, and Circle K, and having some wiggle room on your coloring. I know product identity is important. We just appreciate that. So with all that being said, let me recommend that we adopt a resolution to determine the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Guidelines Section 15332 in filled development and approve use permit 2407, subject to the conditions of approval for the construction of a new 5,300 square foot building with a drive-through and a 3,600 quick serve restaurant with a drive-through at the corner of Bridge Street and Shasta Street on APN 052-324-024 and 052-324-027 and 028.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Future agenda items. Doug Libby.
Thank you, Commissioners. So next month, we're going to cancel the April 9 Planning Commission meeting, so that will be the first meeting of the month. We will be holding the meeting on April 23. At that time, Commissioner Campbell, at that point, your position would be a, a non-voting liaison. So, because the ordinance, the ordinance takes effect April 4. So the, so for the next Planning Commission meeting on April 23, what we're going to have for you is a small two-lot parcel map over on Wilkie Lane. We're also going to have a time extension for Thiara Estates that was, I think about three years ago, up off Elmer Avenue. If I switch hats and put on my Lafco hat, I would tell you that Lafco is currently processing the annexation, and we're looking forward to taking that forward to the Lafco Commission at its meeting in May. So with that, that would conclude my comments, and I would turn it over to Ben.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your attendance. We have a quorum. Definitely, as we're kind of going through this Planning Commission change and, and some commitments by the other Commissioners, definitely appreciate your attendance tonight. With that, so the ordinance officially kicks in here in a few days, and so Kerry, this might have been your last vote. And so for the other Commissioners, we did receive word from Sutter County that Kerry was, again, recommended for the representative. And so with that, he will go into a, into a liaison state into the next meetings, and then we're going to push out in coordination with the city clerk for recruitments in those districts that haven't been appointed. I think that's all of them, right, Doug? I'm looking at, I can't remember, I should have refreshed myself with, with maybe a couple of Commissioners like Rupi and Noor. I don't know if we automatically put you into that district, but I think they have to be reconfirmed. And so, so we'll work through some of that, how that advertisement goes out, and then confirmation. So ultimately, we'll have to go to city council on a timeline and then reconfirm them and then go. So, and then, yeah, I don't quite know, Stacy, how that plays out. We got too many people in District Four, Jackie, Stacy, Rupi, and I think, I think Kerry technically. Are you four or five?
Actually, I'm right in the keyhole.
You're in the keyhole?
Doug and I talked about that.
I couldn't remember if you were actually in the city but in Four, or just right on the edge there.
Right there, which is why I was reading all around.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're working through the weeds. Thank you for the patience with that, and that's the update with Sutter County, and thank you for, again, being willing to participate on our side, Kerry. You know, I don't have a lot, one of them is the appeal. I think Doug has corresponded with you that we did receive an appeal from the property owners representative for the car wash, because we love car washes, as all of you guys know. They, but that, so we're working through that, there's a process, and most likely that will come back to city council in the near future, probably a June timeframe, depending on how that gets worked out. And so, yeah, I was, I was kind of curious if they would speak or not. There's no wall required on this, I was curious if it would come up, but with the compatible uses, commercial, and then the manufacturing, there's not a wall requirement between those, but it didn't come up. Today we talked a little bit development, Doug and I, with, with, with one of the local engineers, we're kind of, so Elmer, as you know, with Lafco, I think it came up last time, the signs are up, they're working through the annexation process for Thiara Estates, which came before you guys a couple of years ago, and so that's starting to move forward. Doug with his Lafco hat is coordinating that. If there's any, we haven't received much, any comment to the city council or to the city level, so I'm kind of curious how that plays out, but right now it's been pretty calm, but the signs are up and visible. What else? We have Spring Hill Suites, that hotel, we talked about that last time, there's a real push for that going, we're kind of working through the phasing and some Caltrans right-of-way issues that they're, but the contractor is definitely trying to pull the permits and start soon, so hopefully you see construction there. You might also start getting some questions about Newcombe Ranch, so down on Bog Road, the, some of the trees, so the, the right-of-way, there was some right-of-way needed, so they dedicated the right-of-way. Officially, that got recorded yesterday, and then in coordination with the farmer, they knocked out the trees, about three rows closest to the, to the road, getting ready for the sewer line work to start here, maybe about the next month. And so you might get some questions, but no houses immediately, but we're starting to put the infrastructure in, and that work's going to start here pretty soon, if you get some questions about it. And I really, I think that's really what I have at the moment. So the piece of the Plan Commission updates, we're starting to see some development, more maps, more discussions about the Lincoln East area, about that starting to take off there, west of Sanborn, north of Bog, some, some areas kind of talking about coming in there and how they facilitate it, but really, the big construction is Spring Hill Suites starting, and then working through that appeal that came through last time. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. The Merriment Apartments, that area right there, I saw in the paper, they were, the funding, is that, does it look like it's going to go through?
You know, the, people are still working through it. There's, there's still a large gap financing, and so the city, so the city has real concerns because the city doesn't have the available funding to finance the gap. And then Habitat thinks they have a plan to kind of work through it. I don't, you know, but the banks and having security and having the real dollars in the amount and the time needed for, is still at question, and so there was a meeting with the city and Habitat to kind of work through, there's about four projects that Habitat has going in Uba City with Merriment, 960 There's about four projects that Habitat has going in Uba City with Merriment, 960 Pluma Street, and then you have just south of the Moose Lodge, and then there's even a small development up off of Providence Court, kind of northeast Uba City. And so we met with them last week to kind of work through some of those particulars and some action items, because there's a lot of talk, a lot of misunderstandings on where they're at and what they're trying to do, and, and try to bring that into focus. Regarding Merriment, the really, the critical path is, they, they got a short-term extension from HCD for their grant, but they still need to come up with that gap funding within that short time, and that hasn't materialized yet.
Hey, since we're going down that, that path of projects that kind of been on the table, while the, across the street from Merriment, those half-plexes that I think were also a Thiara or Thiara-owned, is that just kind of stalled out? It looks like it's for sale, the property?
Yeah, that's, that's what I've heard. I've heard it stalled out, he was trying to sell it. We had another developer that was really looking into it. I don't know if we had any more feedback from the developer as to why it didn't move forward, but yeah, my understanding is for sale and no immediate action. The map's still good. I, I still think it's a great project for that location, but I haven't seen anybody moving, moving next steps yet.
Update from Sutter County, we actually had a meeting, so that was exciting. It was, I think we were from gavel to gavel, nine and a half minutes, was that about it? Yeah, it was very fast. Yeah. Wow, I almost, never mind. But the only project, what's that?
Death glue truck.
Yeah, it's funny. So, so we, we went from smoke shops to truck yards to now car washes being the hated, the hated pet of the, of the decade. So that being said, the only project we had was a, a small change in use, addition to use to a property at the end of Humphrey and Butte House Road. They wanted to add an area for part of, part of storage and treating, so that was pretty much it. And I don't, I think we have anything on the horizon that they shared with us, you know, it's, you know, you, you know how quiet it can be at, at Sutter County, so.
One, one thing though, Arwin, you probably already heard, but Arwin left.
Yes, Arwin left.
Forget where she was going. Rockland or?
She went to Rockland. She went to Rockland Planning, so big jump for her. Big jump. Yeah. So other than that, as, as Ben had shared, the Commission has and the Board approved my reappointment to represent the county on this board, so I'm, I'm happy to serve here either in a voting or liaison function. Enchanté.
Anything else?
All good. Thank you all.
Be adjourned.